We're live. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Welcome All Park for our fourth Tuesday City Council meeting. As you can see, we are not in our normal meeting location at Southwest Dart Center because we are putting on the last of the 20th anniversary season of True Colors Theaters Productions, that serious He-Man Ball. I highly recommend you go see it. It is a great show. Mr. Clerk, go ahead and call the roll whenever you are ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and the public. This is the regular meeting of the City of South Fulton City Council, September 26. Roll call, the Honorable Catherine F. Rawl, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six.
Present.
The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have it, Cor.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is the invocation. I don't see the chaplain here. I saw Corporal Neesmith earlier. But he's not in the room currently.
Is there, is there a pastor in the house or a deacon that would like to lead us in prayer? All right, I'll do it. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together. Please sit on our tongues and make sure that as we debate that we do it in a respectful way. Thank you for all the citizens that come, that have come out tonight. Bless each and every one of them. And everyone who could not be here, everyone who's on their way, give them travel mercies in your mighty and master's name, we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please sound the next item.
That brings us to Roman numeral five, approval of city council meeting minutes. Request council approval of city council regular meeting minutes from August 22nd, 2023. Approval of city council work session minutes from September 12th, 2023. Approval of the alcohol zoning public hearing minutes from September 12th, 2023. And the special call meeting minutes from September 5th, 2023, and September 12th, 2023.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
A move that we approve, all minutes read.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take that vote by a show of hands.
Record, that is unanimous.
All right, thank you. Please sound the next item.
Next item is adoption of the council agenda. And Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to bring to your attention items 11, 12, and 13 are special use permit applications. These were inadvertently placed on the, this agenda. They have to have a public hearing first, so those are being stricken. Also, the city manager is removing item 34, which is ITB 2374, T. Splos, Rivertown Road at Cedar Grove Road. That item is not ready and will be brought back at another meeting.
Mr. Mayor, have another change or recommendation?
All right, the Chair recognizes First Councilman Reeves. I heard you first.
As for items 15, 16, and 17, they're all first reads. And so just to correct that for item number 17.
All right, the Chair recognizes District Four Councilman Sebastian.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to suggest that we take the item approving, that's up for approval, to launch the Project Lifesaver. I thought it was in the teens, but I don't see it here now.
It's item 21.
Item 21, yes. I want to suggest that we move that up from the consent agenda and place it just before the proclamation presentations because it all centers sort of around the same thing for a couple of the presentations that will be happening tonight around Project Lifesaver. And the families have been waiting to receive this proclamation for three months so that we could announce the launch of Project Lifesaver as we give the proclamations out.
All right, can we move it to item number 19? We're gonna, well, I'm sorry, 18B?
The request was to move it before the proclamations.
Wait, I'm sorry.
To item number seven and soon as of.
Are there actual proclamations?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number five.
So we are going to vote on item 21 before the proclamation.
If we can.
Can we do that, City Attorney?
Mayor of Council votes on it to move the agenda, they can move it up.
All right, anything else?
Yes. Mayor, I would like to recommend that we take executive session at the end of the agenda as we always do. We get, residents are very critical of us taking executive session in the middle of our meetings. And they have to sit and wait until we get out of our executive sessions. I know what's going to be discussed, and it's nothing of emergency in nature that will require us to make our residents who have taken time out to see us do official business. And so I'm recommending that we take the executive session, number nine, and move it to the end of the agenda.
Can we have a second, if it would be all right, let's have a second executive session. I don't know how this got transcribed this way, but we do have one pressing real estate item to discuss. And then we could do a second executive session afterwards?
Yeah, I'm requesting that we move all executive sessions to the end of the agenda so we would not have to have our residents wait on us. There is nothing emergency in nature that would require us to make our residents wait until we have executive session.
That you're aware of, but I am aware that we do have a pressing real estate item. So I am going to ask if we could just take 15 minutes to discuss that real estate item in executive session. And then we can have a second executive session on all of the items, personnel litigation, real estate at the end.
So you recommending that on item number nine that we go in executive session for real estate only?
Real estate only, and then we'll add an item, we'll add an executive session, Roman numeral 28? Had to do my translation there. I'm sorry, Roman numeral 27 will be an executive session. And Roman numeral 28 will be the adjournment of the meeting whenever that executive session is over.
I think it's 18.
Maybe 41?
I think it's Roman, I think it's Roman numeral 18.
Eight, I'm sorry.
Seventeen.
I'm not good with this. I'm not good with my Roman numerals. Yes, you're right, 18.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to, I move to approve agenda as amended for Tuesday, September 26.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Let's take that vote by a show of hands.
Record, that is unanimous.
Perfect. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
As amended, as the agenda was amended, that will bring us to item 21, which is request for approval for resolution to approve and implement the Project Lifesaver program and for other purposes. This is sponsored by Councilmember J.C. Sebastian and the Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Project Lifesaver as stated by the City Clerk.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded.
Discussion?
Is there any discussion? It seems like there is. The Chair recognizes Councilman Sebastian.
Ms. Subiran, if you, if you may have the police chief give a short synopsis on what is Project Lifesaver? And then we went over it in the work session, but not everyone who probably viewing tonight really knows what it is and how it's going to be implemented, so just a couple minutes.
You took her name off the list.
Sorry?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. So we had a resident that actually came to us because she had an autistic child. And we developed training for our police officers surrounding that, and some issues came up relative to runaway autistic children or children that tended to wander away from their homes. In a previous life, I had the opportunity to work with Project Lifesaver on people suffering from dementia and diminished capacity, and there's actually these bracelets that work off of radio telemetry that allows us to find those individuals in a very quick way. And so it's helped to save the Police Department man-hours whenever we've been able to leverage the technology. And so this program, we believe, will be a win-win for not only the Police Department, but for our community as well.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, I would like to make a correction to this legislation. I'm not sure how it got left off. But Councilmember Sebastian did ask for cosponsors on this. And Councilmember Williams and myself, and I think Gums also. Thank you.
So is that a, are you? Okay, I think there's, I think that there's a substitute motion on the floor to amend the resolution to include the names of Councilwoman Gums, Willis, Reeves, and Mayor Protim Williams Brown. We have a second for that substitute motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote on that. Show of hands.
Record, that is unanimous.
All right, we'll continue in discussion. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
So move, I shouldn't say so move because that's not proper. I move approval of a resolution to approve and implement the Project Lifesaver program and for other purposes.
I did motion already.
Yeah, there was a substitute motion, so now we're back to this motion.
To the main motion?
Yes, we're back to the main motion.
All right, let's just take a vote by a show of hands.
Record, that is unanimous.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to proclamation presentations. Tonight, we have three presentations on the agenda. The first is the proclamation presentation, recognizing Kyle Watson's Day of Awareness. This is sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian. Followed by that, we will have a proclamation presentation, recognizing Tanya Newberry in Autism Branches Appreciation Day. That is also sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian. And the last proclamation is a presentation, recognizing Galio Appreciation Day. And this is sponsored by Councilmember Pritchett.
Hi, everyone. This is Kyle Watson. And there are very few things, since I've been a council member, that I take pride in doing. I think this is really at the top of the list for me. And I want to thank Ms. Lee, Kyle's mother. We spoke on the phone several, several times. And, you know, between her and the Police Department, they gave me the history of Kyle's mission to bring about change in our city. And I am very, very proud of this young man and his mom. And honestly, last night when I was thinking about presenting this proclamation today, I said, Jesus, help me get through it because I don't want the waterworks to start. So if you are hearing me getting a little emotional, you all would know why. So here we go. Whereas Kyle Watson is a brave young man who has an unwavering positive attitude and passion for living life to the fullest. Kyle's love for life has allowed him to overcome significant challenges in his life since his diagnosis with autism at an early age. And whereas Kyle enjoys swimming, stuff animals, flying kites, skating, playing with motor-controlled cars, and hanging out with his friends. And whereas Kyle encountered the City of South Fulton police officers and was detained. The encounter wasn't ideal since South Fulton police officers hadn't received formal training regarding how to properly engage with individuals with autism. And whereas Kyle's experience has served as a clarion call for the South Fulton community to address the urgent need of training and education around autism for law enforcement officers. In response to Kyle's encounter, the City of South Fulton Police Department has instituted a mandatory five-hour training program for its police officers to ensure that they have the necessary skills and knowledge to work with individuals with autism. Whereas additionally, Kyle's encounter has resulted in the City of South Fulton and its Police Department implementing Project Lifesaver, which is a program designed to assist in quickly locating individuals with cognitive disorders who are prone to life-threatening behavior of wandering. The collaborative effort of bringing loved ones home will increase police-community relationships through public outreach programs and education. Whereas the City of South Fulton is honored to recognize Kyle's bravery and the work that his experience has inspired as a result of Kyle's strength and determination. This experience will bring added awareness to individuals with autism and demonstrate the valuable contribution that individuals with autism make to the society. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of South Fulton, on behalf of over 108 residents that reside in the city, hereby proclaim and recognize Tuesday, September 26th, as Kyle Watson Day of Awareness in the City of South Fulton. Give this young man a clap. So Mom, Mom says she doesn't want to say anything. I know she's already tearing up. Anybody on council who wishes to add anything, you guys are welcome to do so. Yeah, I know, he's ready to go. So I'm going to give this to him, and we're going to try and take a picture and then let him go because he is ready to go. No, again, this next proclamation is for this young lady who is, who is a warrior for not only her own child, but she is determined, and we need to be right there with her as a city. She's determined that the services that are lacking for, for programs around autism on the south side here, she's determined to change that. I think she's a resident of District Two unless you live in the gated community of Walden Park, then you're District Four. So I'm going to ask her, I'm going to ask her council member to help read this with me. But this person right here to my right, she has formed an organization, and we have held in District Four for the last two years, the Autism Sensory Festival, where people have come from all over Georgia to our community to experience the Autism Sensory Festival. So I am more than, more than proud. I was going to wait until next, next year to do this, but since we had Kyle here, so I figured it was, it was the best thing to do to have them both here at the same time. So I'm going to start, and I'm going to let Councilmember Gums finish. Whereas Tanya Newberry, a resident of Atlanta, Georgia for more than 20 years, had made a profound impact in the South Fulton community and in the lives of many families impacted by children diagnosed with autism. Tanya, the mother of an 11-year-old, Alexander, knows firsthand the challenges and hardships that families encounter while raising a child diagnosed with autism, from toddlerhood to young adolescence. And whereas studies show that one in 54 children are diagnosed with autism, but disparities in the timing of diagnosis and the quality and quantity of developmental therapy significantly impact the success of African-American families in dealing with, with the diagnosis. And whereas, from the perils of the pandemic, Tanya created Autism Branches, a foundation designed to connect resources of professional services with parents whose children are diagnosed with autism, and more importantly, with other families who are also experiencing similar situations.
Whereas Autism Branches has enabled a community of experienced parents and therapists to circumvent the gap in resources being offered to families in the South Fulton community. With the assistance of the City of South Fulton, Tanya's foundation and support team birthed the inaugural Autism Sensory Festival starting in 2021, and the festival has developed into an annual event with more than 300 attendees from all over Georgia gathering at Wilkinson Mill Park. And whereas, the resources and opportunities utilized from this festival help bring a community together, which allows families to embrace one another and offer a network of valuable services, advice, and techniques that empower parents to help their children thrive in a world filled with indifference. Now therefore be resolved, the Mayor and City Council of the City of South Fulton, and on behalf of, on behalf of the over 100 and and on behalf of, on behalf of the over 108,000 residents that reside in this city, hereby proclaim and recognize today, Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, as Tanya Newberry in Autism Branches Appreciation Day in the City of South Fulton. Congratulations. And don't you cry either. Y'all know we sensitive.
Unselfishly, I created this foundation for all the people like me that need that extra support and motivation to know that you can get through it. My son is out on the playground. He saw that, and he ran, so I can't get him in here. But literally, when I started this moment in my life, you never expect your child to turn from being perfectly normal, as one would say, neurotypical child to a neurodivergent child. There are people that came to me that are teachers, educators for years, other parents, and with their advice, I've been able to take my nonverbal child, and he's now semi-verbal. He wasn't reading, he's now reading. He couldn't do basic math, he can now do basic math. But it's not for the weak at heart. You really have to roll your sleeves up, and you have to really go in this full throttle, or your child might get left behind. And in no way am I criticizing teachers, but I've lived in Buckhead for 14 years, and I lived in Clayton County for four years. The services are very, very narrow, south of 166. And I am going to do everything I can to make sure that we have an abundant of services, just like they do in Gwinnett County, and Alpharetta, and Buckhead, and Norcross. It makes no sense. The funds are abundant, but they're not coming to us. And I can't do this by myself. And it's just not for children on the spectrum. It's for kids that need that extra push in their education. A special needs teacher can only do so much with one paraprofessional. And if she has to attend to medically fragile children, and the kids that are in there that want to learn, the kids who want to learn really don't have that opportunity to thrive, because their hands are full. They deserve raises, they deserve two paraprofessionals per classroom, and this is something I've seen firsthand, and I'm not just speaking. I've been a PTA president, I've worked in these classrooms. I give it my last dime to make sure that I can help everybody I can. But y'all can help me. My foundation is called Autism Branches. My website is www-autismbranches.org. We're getting ready for our third annual, thanks to the City of South Fulton, Autism Sensory Festival. It's April 13th next year. We need as many professionals in therapy, in speech, in occupational, in respite services, neurologists, like anybody that's in the field that deals with the brain, the education, the learning aspect. We want these kids to thrive. They have the ability to work at Amazon, Google, Microsoft, and they deserve that. Thank you.
This is what community is about. So thank you so much for dumping in. When you sent the email back in 2021, I said, "Why not? Why not?" Because our kids are important. And then when Councilmember Sebastian came on board, I knew you were in good hands. So it's going to keep growing. Each year, it's going to get bigger and bigger, and we need these resources. So congratulations again. You're welcome.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon, everyone. No, it's in English. I'm just being nice. We are continuing to celebrate Hispanic Heritage History Month, and Councilwoman Gums and I are first generation Hispanic Americans, and we would like to celebrate Galeo and present them with this proclamation that she will help me read. Whereas Galeo is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization based in Norcross, Georgia, founded in 2003. Galeo strives for a better Georgia, where Latinx community is engaged civically and its contributions and concerns are recognized. The membership group includes people from Latin America, Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Spain. And whereas Galeo focuses on increasing civic participation of the Latinx community and developing prominent Latino leaders throughout Georgia. Through leadership initiatives such as the Galeo Institute for Leadership Cohort and the Galeo Leadership Council, the organization has been able to cultivate more knowledgeable, skilled, and committed, action-oriented leaders. And?
And whereas Galeo has been at the forefront of issues advocating for immigrant rights, substantial pay, and equal opportunities in labor, opportunities for Latinx, for, what is that, Latinx, Latinx, and technology and diversity issues related to Latinx as a whole. And whereas Galeo's Impact Fund has helped Latinx candidates and elected officials with endorsements during election periods to provide them with the support needed to stay competitive. And whereas through advocacy and education, over the last 10 years, Galeo has grown from 16,000 members to over 300,000 members and counting. Galeo is proudly celebrating 20 years of service and commitment to the Latinx community in Georgia, and the City of South Fulton joined them in that celebration. Now therefore be resolved that the Mayor and City Council do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 16th, 2023, as Galeo Appreciation Day in the City of South Fulton, Georgia, even though today is Tuesday. Yes, I know. Congratulations.
Buenos dias and muchas gracias for this presentation today. We are so appreciative of the recognition of the work of Galeo over the past 20 years and also of your service. We need diversity and representation at all levels of government. So what you all do here is important, and for all the people that show up to these meetings and making your voices heard, that's also important. So thank you too.
All right, Mr. Clerk, would you please sound the next item?
Next item on the agenda is Roman numeral eight. This is FY 2024 Budget Public Hearing. This is the third public hearing.
All right, Madam City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the final public hearing on the budget. Not going to be long. You've heard this presentation before. Next slide, please, Cory. The budget reflects a 0.5 mil military reduction. All continuing operations are funded. We have included in our budget the 3% cost of living adjustment for all city employees and increase in our minimum wage to $20 an hour. We have, next slide, please. We have five areas of new initiatives in the budget. Quality of life, and public infrastructure, public safety, workforce development, future city facilities, and planning for our future. Next slide, please. The reductions that we made allowed us to not change the amount of base budget for continuing operations. We did not change the amount of fund balance, and the impact on new initiatives is manageable. Next slide, please. And this breaks down how we made the reductions. We've already talked about that. But no major impacts to our ability to function. Our general fund budget is $126 million. Our general fund capital, one-time expenses, $23 million and $53 million other funds. Next slide. And this is a breakdown of our general fund budget and our capital budget. Next slide, please. Next slide, and then the next one. Thank you. And so you'll see our 62% of our budget is general fund, 13% special revenue, 4% for the solid waste enterprise fund, our tree fund, grants. We're bringing forward the American Rescue Act funding into this fiscal year. We are on a shorter timeline now to expand those funds. And as explained, we're using 12% of our budget is coming from our fund balance. This is a further breakdown with more detail. And these are our revenue sources. Our largest source of revenue continues to be property taxes at 47%. But our second largest is our local option sales tax at 27%, and that particular line item is the one that is growing. And you can see the other areas where we do have diversity of income streams. And our special fund revenue, TSPLOST, it continues to be a very strong source of revenue at 77%. Our pedestrian safety funds are accounted for separately. Hotel motel, East and West Side TAD have seen little growth, but we are optimistic that those will increase in upcoming years. Next slide. And expenditures by category, not like other governments. Public safety is our largest at 32%. And you can see the many areas where the city funds are dispersed on the expenditure side. Next slide. I did add one slide that you have not seen before. This is the proposed council events that we have spoken about ad nauseam. And so we have incorporated in the budget, in parks, your signature events, and to support your secondary events, we have allocated a line item in the city manager's budget to be able to support your secondary events. And we're hoping next year that we will be able to group town halls in order to maximize participation and coverage. Next slide, please. And quality of life. Of note are your big categories, streetlight master plan, the parks master plan, the, some match funding for big projects, but very large investment in the public infrastructure in this category. Next slide. This is an area where we have dedicated funding for debt service for our future facilities. We're estimating $100 million in debt service. This would essentially be your mortgage payment once we embark on those large projects, as well as we have some other needs in our parks, CIP, and funding for our cultural affairs. Next slide. Public safety, we've added some positions in both police and fire, as well as equipment, and embarking on our EMS, expansion of our EMS program. And workforce development, already talked about, the $20 minimum wage. We have plugged some funding in here for the results of the PACE study, which will be back mid-October. And we are also embarking on a large reorganization of the city with the addition of new departments. And planning for the future. It said if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And so these are areas of important study and planning that we need to do, especially around the comprehensive plan update and comprehensive transportation plan update, as well as the impact fee study and historic resources survey. And then this next slide, it's hard to read, but it is the allocation of anticipated local option sales tax, TSPLOST projects in 2024. And budget adoption is actually today, not the 12th. And so with that, I am subject to your questions.
All right, I'm sure everyone has questions. We're just going to go right around. We'll go reverse order, starting with District 7, Councilwoman Lady Pritchett.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. I think that this bears saying, because when we were going through the budget process, we heard from citizens that wanted to have some type of relief or wanted to lessen their tax liability when it came to their property taxes. And I just found out about two weeks ago about the 2023 Property Tax Relief Grant. Although this doesn't affect our budget, it affects the citizens. So Governor Kemp had come up with this grant, which gives you homestead tax relief in the amount of $18,000 per household. So that, we did roll back our mileage rate, which has nothing to do with this, but these, this will give you an $18,000 reduction in your homestead, as a homestead exemption. So that should help lessen your tax liability for your property tax. Ms. Subedan, you send it out to many of us if you want to expound in any way on this.
I think it's up to $18,000. It's up to, right, it's not a straight 18, it's up to $18,000. My, my understanding is that the city will, through the taxing authority, will receive credits for that from the state. And so we will be made whole, because we've already counted on that revenue in order to balance our budget. But property owners will see that. The one thing I will say for the record is this is a one-time relief. And if it's not reaproved in the next calendar year, you will see a sharp increase in your property taxes if that relief goes away. And so I want to kind of remind everybody that it's a one-time tax holiday, but if it's not renewed in 2025, then, or in the 24th session, then that 18, up to $18,000 will be back in your taxable property value. So that's just something for people to keep in mind. And I you, thank you.
Thank you for that important footnote, Madam City Manager. The chair recognizes Mayor Pro 10, Natasha Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. All the questions that I had, I already discussed with the city manager, and so I have nothing for this session.
All right, thank you. Councilman Reeves, District 5.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, and for presenting this. As, at the last presentation before approval, I asked that, particularly for some of the projects, that was for the sidewalks and for the traffic coming measures, that we have a roadmap to success. And so will you be presenting that to us coming forth? And so that we can get that to the constituents? Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right, the chair recognizes District 4, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Subedan, to you and your team in finance for going through the budget and finding a way that we could save the citizens a little money. I think that's a job well done. I think you and the team, and as a city, we, we should be proud, because in essence, we are saying we're giving a tax cut. We're increasing services, right? Because the budget is increasing over last year. And we are doing some things, planning for the future, and as well as giving employees a minimum of $20. So as a city, we ought to be very proud of this budget. And I look forward to working with you and the team over the year to make... to make the impacts that this budget should have on our city. So thank you all very much. And thank you, colleagues, for voting to cut the military by point five mil.
The Chair recognizes District Three, Councilwoman Helen Zee Willis.
Thank you. I want to thank Mrs. Subedan and her entire team for the tireless efforts that they put forth, bringing us this fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. I've been on the council for six years, and this has been the most organized in detail that I have seen. I also want to make note that the twenty-twenty-three property tax relief grant, as Ms. Subedan stated, it is a one-time grant, and it is up to eighteen thousand. For those who own property, go ahead and go to the tax commissioner's website and pull your tax bill. It is already applied. I looked at mine today, and it did reduce my property tax by about fifty percent. And so the mill, the mill rate rollback will apply to the twenty-twenty-four taxes. When we, so as Ms. Subedan stated, you will see a, an increase next year, because this is a one-time tax relief that the General Assembly passed. It is not, for those who, you will not get this tax relief in the form of a check. It is applied to your property tax. But what you might want to do is call your mortgage company and have a conversation with your mortgage company, because some mortgage companies do analysis at the end of the year. And if you have an overpayment, sometimes they will go ahead and send that overpayment back to you. And so I would suggest that if you just have that conversation with your mortgage company. And this tax relief does not apply to rental property. So, and this is not a tax relief that was afforded to you all by our local government. It did come from the General Assembly. So thank your state legislators, when you see them, for a job well done. Thank you, I yield.
All right, thank you. The Chair recognizes District Two, Councilwoman Carmelita Gomes.
Only thing I have to say is, thank you, Ms. Subedan, again, for doing an excellent job. I don't have anything else. I'll say whatever comments I have for later on, but good job on the budget. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes District One, Councilwoman Dr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to reiterate what my colleagues said, but I also want to give a shout out to the mayor, because I think getting to the, the annual calendar just made sense. While it was a long discussion, it was necessary. And I think scaling back will improve the impact and attendance we have across city events. So step in the right direction.
Oh, thank you. All right, with that, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We actually did have one person who signed up for the, the budget hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do have a budget hearing.
Yes.
All right, come forth.
Yes, the speaker was Ms. Jill Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jill Johnson, and I reside at forty-six sixty Oakley Lane.
Hold on, was everyone trying to mic?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jill Johnson, and I reside at forty-six sixty Oakley Lane. I think it's thirty-eight years now. If not, it's pretty soon will be thirty-eight years. I want to talk about the budget, because first of all, I am glad to see that we got through the budget area, but there are so many of us citizens that still have quite a few questions as it relates to the budget. And I can see that we did put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget this time, after three times that we've asked that we have money in our budget for impact fees. I'd like to see that that three, I mean, that hundred thousand dollars that we have in the budget actually goes to make sure that we get that impact study, because we cannot charge Ms. Subedan for impact fees if we have not done that study. That's very crucial, and it takes away the stigma of it looking like we are accepting money under the table with these developers, especially we, when we have our council people working with developers on projects that they have to vote on. That is unethical, and it is illegal. And we're, I am asking that we not do that. And one of the other main things that bothers not only me and my family, but a lot of people that I talk to throughout this city. And you all know I'm in all of the districts, because I care. And I love City of South Fulton, one of the people that helped pay for what happened to get us through to where we are right now. And I'm not going anywhere. I love it here, and I just want everybody to understand that, Mr. Mayor, you have the authority to go ahead and do that forensic audit, and I'm asking you to do it. You do not have to ask the, the council for permission. That is in our chart. And I'm challenging you to go ahead to do that. I will be one of the top supporters of you doing that, and many other citizens. We must have a forensic audit.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Jill Johnson, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have any other speakers?
We have no other cards submitted for the budget, no.
Okay. All right, the Chair recognizes District One, Councilwoman Dr. Rowe.
Thank you. I just want to take a point of privilege, because I think it's important to educate the public. Any project that comes before this council, if they have worked with a developer, and if that developer has given them any money, the developer and the city councilperson has to divulge that. And so I don't want any citizen to walk out of this door hearing a statement. I think everybody on this council, they felt something unethical was going on, that they should file an ethics complaint with the city, or the state if necessary. But our process requires any developer to divulge that information, as well as the councilperson to refrain from voting on that issue. So just want to be clear.
The Chair recognizes District Three, Councilwoman Helen Zee Willis.
We have a community department of regulatory affairs process. It is not illegal for us to converse with developers who anticipate developing in our city, in our specific districts. As a matter of fact, developers tend to reach out to council members so that they can engage with community members prior to entering the rezoning process, if it is a rezone, so that they can make sure not only they are following the zoning requirements and the future land use requirements, so that they can get a pulse and a sense of the community of what they desire. So I refute any allegations that we are doing anything unethical as it relates to developers. And as stated, if there is anything unethically being done, we do have a process where an ethics complaint can be filed. So for District Three residents, I will continue to march as I always do, and that is in collaboration with you. If developers come to this community, I will make sure, if it's on a welcome-all side, we always send out notices, and we meet, and we discuss. And if it's on a click the nail side, I ask developers to work with my click the nail community. We want to make sure that we have development that is desirable, both for the community and make sure that developers are bringing desirable development to our city. Thank you. And I look forward to working with the community and any developer who would like to develop here in District Three. Have a nice day.
The Chair recognizes Madam City Manager.
Has everybody finished speaking? I just wanted to say thank you for the kind words and to acknowledge the team. It was truly a team effort, everybody, from the hard work done in every budget meeting by the budget analysts and the rest of the finance team, as well as those who worked on the village, as well as public affairs, for helping us with our graphics and notifying the public. And thank you all for your thoughtful questions and for your support.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, stole my thunder. I just want to double-tap everything that she said. There has been a flurry of activities when you go through the halls, city halls around this budget. And our entire finance department almost is as new as Ms. Subedan. So you all came in and really took the reins and did a lot with a little in a short amount of time. Thank you all so much. The District Councilwoman is asking if you all would just stand to be acknowledged by our audience and fellow staff. They're so modest. Mr. OJ, our CFO. And that is his team around him. They're just, you know, they're just modest people that, that, that do the work. We're the ones that want to be on camera, so thank you so much, though. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, that brings us to Roman numeral eight, number seven. It's the second read and request approval of an ordinance to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget for each fund of the City of South Fulton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts showing in each fund as expenditures, expenses, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding available, and for other lawful purposes.
May I move for approval of the twenty-twenty-four budget?
Second.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution as sounded by the clerk.
I move that we approve the fiscal twenty-twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. We'll just take a vote by show of hands.
Court, that is unanimous?
All right. Please sound the next item.
Next item is item eight, second read and request approval of an ordinance to amend Title XI Parks and Recreation, Chapter Eight, Arts and Entertainment of the City of South Fulton Code ordinances for the purpose of amending South Fulton Public Arts Ordinance. This is sponsored by the Cultural Affairs Department.
All right, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution as sounded by the clerk.
I move to approve the amendments to the Arts and Entertainment Code under the Parks and Recreation Section, Chapter Eight.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? Seeing and hearing none? I'll take a vote by show of hands.
Court, that is unanimous?
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to Roman numeral nine, executive session.
All right, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for fifteen short minutes to discuss real estate.
I move to go into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss personnel litigation, real estate.
Just, just real estate.
Okay, just real estate.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Let's take a vote by show of hands.
Court, that is unanimous. We are recessed at five PM for executive session.
(pause)
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We apologize for our dilatory deliberations. We did have some important matters to discuss and got back here as soon as possible. Uh, Mr. Clerk, we, uh, I'll take a motion to reconvene. Did you all do that already?
I'll make the motion to reconvene.
All right, uh, let's do a vote by show of hands.
Record that as five to zero. We are reconvened at five forty-two P. M.
All right, let's go ahead and sound the next item.
Next item, it's Roman numeral number ten. Under planning, zoning, and permits, alcohol license rezoning, variance, and special use permit cases for vote were noted. The first one is alcohol license case number nine. It's a case from Tom Waters doing business as Club Wax seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. The motion was to den, to deny.
Yes.
So that vote was six to zero to deny.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item ten. Application by Fanny's Incorporated. Doing business as Fanny's Cabaret seeks an alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. It's located in District One.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, deny the alcohol license for the consumption or sale of wine at forty-three seventy-five Commerce Drive.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Zenobia-Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, although this is not my thing, I do not, I am not in agreement, and our code is our code, and, um, you know, we can't get around it. But I am not agreement, in agreement with adversely impacting a business, um, because they were annexed into the city of South Fulton. Um, these businesses that are coming before us, um, were operating when it was Fulton County. I did have a conversation with our police chief, and our police chief, um, did not say that these, uh, businesses were causing a lot of problems as far as it relates to crime. Um, and so that would have given me my hesitation.
I wouldn't get into those nature discussions.
Yes, that would, that would have been my hesitation, um, to, you know, about this. Um, but these businesses were operating before we became, um, on the county side legally, because the county did allow for, uh, this type of licensing. Um, but our current code here in the city of South Fulton does not allow for this, this type of licensing. And so, um, as a small business owner, I know how it is, how hard it is to, uh, work to build your business and to make it financially viable. Um, I am very sorry that you were being adversely impacted because you were annexed into the city of South Fulton. I yield.
Seeing and hearing no further comment, uh, we will do a vote by show of hands. seeks an alcohol license for the consumption, sales of wine, beer and distilled beverages at forty-four zero one C Fulton Industrial Boulevard, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three six. This is located in District One.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to deny the alcohol license for forty-four oh one C Fulton Industrial Boulevard.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? The Chair recognizes once again District Three Councilwoman Helen Willis.
Same thing, um, our code does not allow for adult entertainment and alcohol licensing. Um, on the county side, these businesses were allowed to operate. Um, according to the police chief, they did not cause a lot of problems, but our code does not permit, um, alcohol licensing and adult entertainment here in the city of South Fulton. Um, I apologize to the business owners because it does appear that you were being adversely impacted because you're annexed, because you were annexed in the city of South Fulton. Thank you.
All right, seeing and hearing no further discussion, uh, we'll take another vote by show of hands.
I record that as six zero to deny.
All right, please sound the next item.
Items eleven, twelve and thirteen were previously removed from the agenda. That brings us to item fourteen, which is a first read of a resorting ordinance for an application by P V J Re Holdings, L L C requesting the rezoning from A G one to C one and a concurrent variance to reduce the north zoning buffer from twenty-five feet to ten feet, reduce the north improvement setback from ten feet to zero feet, to reduce the east zoning buffer from fifty feet to twenty-five feet, and to reduce the parking space requirement from forty-seven spaces to twenty-nine spaces at the parcel located at the corner of Old National Highway and Cabaret Terrace, located in District Six.
All right, the Chair will entertain a motion.
It's first read.
I'm sorry, this is first read. Uh, please sound the next item.
Next item is also a first read, number fifteen, of a rezoning ordinance for an application by Kenneth Wilson to rezon from A G one to M one. A property located at twenty-eight eighty-eight Sullivan Road, College Park, Georgia, three oh three three seven. This is located in District Five. This was a first read as well.
All right, is there any, uh, all right, seeing and hearing no discussion, please sound the next item.
Next item is item sixteen, which is first read, first read.
I'm sorry, I, I think there's been some confusion. Is this first read, second read?
First read.
First read, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, item sixteen is a first read as well, a resulting ordinance for an application by Randy Arnold Junior, requesting to rezon from A G one and sub A to M I X at a property located at fifty-four twenty-five and fifty-four forty-five Buffington Road, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine. It's located in District Five. It's first read.
All right, uh, is there any discussion, seeing and hearing none? Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item seventeen, case number Z twenty-three dash zero one one. This is a second read and request approval of an ordinance to rezon from R three to R five A and a property located at zero S D's Drive. This is located in District Five.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Reeves.
I move to defer to the Chair.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, uh, I'll take a vote by show of hands.
I'll record that as unanimous. Motion to defer this item to the October tenth council meeting.
All right, please sound the next item.
That brings us to the consent agenda.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda items, items eighteen through twenty-four.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? The Chair recognizes District Seven Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to point out in, um, number twenty-three that this, um, approval to accept the congressional appropriation of eight hundred and five thousand dollars, um, came from our Congressman David Scott. So many thanks to our Congressman for making money available for public safety purposes, and I yield.
All right, seeing and hearing no further comments, I'll take a vote by show of hands.
Record that as unanimous and for the record, item twenty-one was previously voted on, so.
Perfect. All right, and that brings us to my favorite part of the meeting where we get to hear from all of you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the rules and announce the public commenters?
We're at the public comment portion of today's meeting. I'll read the rules, uh, for providing public comment. Um, the city of South Fulton believes that any resident or business owner located in the city limits should be afforded the opportunity to address the mayor and city council, provided that designated rules are followed by the speaker. Any city of South Fulton resident or business owner who wishes to address the mayor or council, city council, and offer public comment on any item on the agenda may do so during the public comment period of the, of the meeting. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker. A bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Public comments shall be limited to only those items appearing on the current city council meeting agenda. Each speaker must complete and submit a request to speak form in its entirety prior to the beginning of the meeting. The person or business owner desiring to speak should rise, address the city council, and when recognized, state their name, residential or business address, the agenda item they are addressing, and the city council district in which they reside. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any one member. Speakers may not disrupt the city council meeting by speaking for too long, by being unduly repetitive, or by extending discussion on, on, or of irrelevancies. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in the comments. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors should have their microphone disabled and if necessary, should be removed from the meeting. Speakers should not be allowed to make remarks that have been legally recognized to not be protected speech, comments addressed in the council. And then lastly, speakers may not use public comments to campaign for political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates for the purposes of eliminating political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. With those rules read into the record, Mr. Mayor and Council, we have, we have five cards that we received. Um, as I call your name, please come to the center of the microphone, state your name, address, the item you are referencing, and the city council district in which you reside. First speaker for tonight's public comment is Marcia Clementor. Uh, next is Jasmine Hooper, Jewel Johnson, Mel Keaton, and Jermaine Lojet.
Walk and approach this mic right here. Feel free to adjust it if you need.
Okay. My name is Marcia Clementor and I live on, um, twenty-eight seventy Kenan Road, and that's in the Pine Tree subdivision, and I believe that's District Six. And the reason I'm here, I'm speaking on item number thirty-nine, which is Brightview Landscape. I noticed that they're up for renewal, as well as they're asking for a three percent increase on this new contract. My concern is that I've seen them do the landscape and all, cleaning the curb. According to their contract, they're supposed to mow, define the curb edges, remove buildup from gutters and curbs, and spray the weeds. And I was watching them doing one particular street. They did it in, at the bridge. Then when they came to doing the entire street, they just used a weed whacker and just did the top of it. I specifically asked the gentleman, aren't you going to do something about the grass that's growing over the curb? Oh, no. I said, what about the grass that's growing out of the con- out of the concrete? Oh, no, 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 we're not supposed to go there. I just, I'm supposed to do the top. So what I'd like to see happen here is that since they are responsible for doing these things and it has not been done, we need to have some type of quality control, um, because if we're spending almost a million dollars and we're not getting the results that we're paying for, that's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Jasmine Hooper.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, City of South Fulton, Council and staff. My name is Jasmine Hooper. Um, I'm representing the Metro Atlanta American Heart Association. I'm the Community Advocacy Director, um, and I'm here to talk about Agenda Item fourteen point thirty. And, um, that is the introduction of an ordinance to amend the current smoke-free air laws to provide an exemption, um, from the current smoking regulations listed under Section six dash ten twelve for, um, Grown and Sexy Tavern located on thirty-four sixty-one Roosevelt Highway, Suite fifteen. Um, in January of twenty-twenty-one, the city of South Fulton sent a strong message that the burden of tobacco and tobacco-related health disparities and inequities on the community would not be expanded under your watch by passing a strong comprehensive smoke-free ordinance. This ordinance, as it states, prohibits smoking in all public places and places of employment as stated in Section six dash one thousand and seven and six dash six, excuse me, dash one thousand and eight. Cigar bars with a license to operate as a tobacco business as of November first, twenty-twenty are the only establishments where smoking is not regulated as stated in Section six dash ten twelve. Therefore, the opening and operation of this establishment, which seems to have opened in March of twenty-twenty-three, is actually, um, as a bar, lounge, or place of employment that allows smoking indoors is in violation of the city's current ordinance. So amending the city of South Fulton's current smoke-free laws for a business that is already unfortunately operating illegally would not only make the city vulnerable to potential lawsuits for, from other local establishments who are, um, operating in accordance with the ordinance, and, um, it also signals to others that the city of South Fulton is willing to negotiate its current health standards as requested. It is well documented that smoking and secondhand smoke exposure have been proven to cause heart disease and stroke. So I urge you to consider not amending this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Jewel Johnson. Ms. Johnson, I don't see her in the room. Next is Mr. Mel Keaton.
How are you? Mel Keaton, Alice Heber Drive. Uh, I represent, um, Hampton Oaks Homeowners Association, and I'm the president of the association, Neighborhood Watch. And, uh, on the consent agenda, I see nineteen and three. You have the townhomes that were already, I guess, on the consented, consent agenda that I guess you approved it, um, but I fought really hard to get Crown out of South Fulton, uh, to establish some new better development, which was Camden Manor, Sierra Estates, and Oakhurst Glen. So that was a part of Hampton Oaks, the Martha Stewart whole buildout. So we established that, I signed an agreement for them to stop and discontinue their development and bring in other developments with D R Horton that made agreements with them. Uh, in return, um, they are using our name. We, they haven't really sat down with us at all to talk about what they're doing. And we know these developers, when they leave, they normally leave and steamroll us. They don't have any plan. They ju- you know, uh, and I just don't trust it. We don't trust it. So we're asking, uh, before going any further with this development that they sit down with us and they have an opportunity to sit down with us. We have, we actually have an H way meeting tomorrow at seven thirty to show us what they're trying to do. Because I, I have the plan for that initial, um, development that was approved through Fulton County, and it was supposed to do, supposed to similar, be similar to the, uh, development on Camp Creek Village. And, um, we would, we would like this not to go any further without discussing it with us because this direct, directly, um, directly involves us. It's our, it's right at our back door. So we, we kind of want to get a hold on that. And the other thing that I want to speak on was, uh, I'm, I'm all for the pools in the six, four and five, but I just want to make sure that, uh, we've been responsible with the budget because, um, you know, we don't want to see a lot of change orders, and change orders really should not be too far from the contract. They, they should be within reason, and we know that a lot of these change orders keep coming and it's sending us over budget, and we want to make sure that whoever's the P M on this, on this development, I'm sorry. Okay.
And the last speaker is Mrs. Jermaine Lojet. Um, but I show she resides in Stone Mountain, Georgia.
All right, um, Council, it is, uh, I've been made aware, Ms. Ms. Jet is the mother of Wendell Lowe Junior, um, one of the recent, uh, bodies found in Camelot. It was her son. And she is asked to speak today. She's been advised that this item is not on the agenda. Uh, but I have been asked to ask the council to allow this mother to speak to the audience.
Ask we suspend the rules so she can speak.
Second.
Oh, I was going to say, I move that we suspend the rules so that she can speak. It's not, it's not. We have to suspend the rules and then we have to vote to allow her to speak. That's.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, I will, uh, take a vote by show of hands to suspend the rules.
Record that as unanimous.
Thank you. Nice check. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Jermaine Lojet. My son was killed in Camelot on September sixth. I'm trying to find out why we haven't shut these condominiums or whatever they are, why they not haven't been shut down? I don't understand. You have a coal enforcement, but when you run into those apartments, they look like a third world country lives there. I don't understand why of you're allowing these people to still live there? It's infested with rats, everything else, and it's, every time I turn around, we're getting a young black male or young black woman, female, and they're being killed. It's just like you don't care. You're looking over it. I'm just trying to find out. I know this has been going on for at least fifteen years. And everybody keep talking about, we're working on it, we're working on it. Tell me what you're working on. I'm speaking to you now, Mr. Reeves, since that's your district. What are you working on? What are you doing to fix these apartments or whatever they are, condominiums? I won't call them condominiums because they don't look like condominiums. They look like apartments. So if you over that district, you're not doing anything for coal enforcement? I don't understand. You have elderly people that's been staying out there all their lives, and they are prisoners in their own home. They have to go inside around five o'clock because they're scared and don't come out till the next morning. Our elderly people shouldn't live like this. So what are you doing to fix the property? It's a question, sir.
No, I'm not allowed to respond right now.
Okay. So I'm just trying, you're going to see my face and you're going to continue to see my face until you tell me why these apartments are not shut down before we kill another black male is found dead over there. My son was shot eighteen times. I don't understand that. I don't understand it, and there's nothing you can say to make me understand it. And I know I have stood here and went over my time, but I want someone to explain to me why these apartments still active? Why are people still living in these apartments?
First, Ms. Jet, let me just say that we, um, are sorry for your loss and our prayers are with you. And, uh, if there's anyone else, we have suspended the rules. If there's anyone else who would like to take a point of personal privilege, the Chair recognizes District Five Councilman Corey Reeves.
True condolences to the loss of your child, which no parent should have to bear. There's nothing I can say to heal those wounds or anything in that nature. But I will be very clear on there was a whole plan in place for Camelot, and it has been three and a half years in the making, and we have a resolve and a solution, as I just gave you my number. But I'm not going to do it here on this dais as because the things that we are doing is it's unique in its nature and the factions that go. is, it's unique in its nature and the factions that go on in Camelot. But I will say this, and you can verify with our code enforcement and our law enforcement officers, as, um, we have been active in cleaning up the area. And we had a meeting with the community, public safety officers, and all that are involved. And more so, we had a meeting last Monday with our economic development and spoke about this very deal on the revitalization of Highway two seventy-nine and the center point of that corridor, which is Camelot. And I would be more than happy to talk with you, uh, offline and include you in the conversations, uh, that are we going forward. And so, as stated, we are doing exactly what needs to be done in a very legal, strategic manner. Facts. Chief is here, police is here, you can verify with them. As, uh, but I assure you, it's not going overlooked and unaddressed.
May I say something else?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, please.
You cannot assure me of anything. For three years, it doesn't take three years to do anything. Those apartments been bad for over fifteen years. And you say you, for the last three years, what are you trying to do, get a bigger payment? I don't understand. Make me understand what you trying to do, because right now, I don't understand. I just know it's a lot of killing in those apartments. You have elderly people held hostage in those apartments, and you telling me you've been working on this for three years? What have you done? Because I don't see anything.
Well, it's, as you said.
And it's not funny.
As you said, I'm not laughing at all. But as you stated, a fifteen-year problem and a three, it's not gonna become, it's not gonna do anything overnight, and a plan is not gonna be effectuated overnight. However, is that, as stated, I will be more than happy to sit down with you and the powers that be and include you on letting you know what is going on. And as it can be verified by our chief, by our code enforcement, unfortunately, our director just left. But however, is, in the legal manner, it's a process. And all I'm saying is this, if you, is, if everybody here has seen New Jack City?
That's what it is, New Jack City. It's just like the same apartment complex that they took over. And I still don't understand. You're still saying it takes time. What kind of time does it take for one of your family members to get killed in those apartments in order for you to do something? It's nothing you can say to make me understand. I'm trying, I'm trying. We all are trying. But it's ridiculous for the, these young men to keep getting killed in those apartments, and y'all are not doing anything.
All right, um, thank you, thank you, Ms. Jet, for your comments, and thank you, Councilman Reeves, for your response. Uh, this item is not on the agenda, uh, for discussion, um, tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting a point of perp, of personal privilege as well.
Oh, all right.
And I think it's relevant.
But apparently, we're gonna discuss it now. Thank you for coming and forcing this discussion, Ms. Jet. Uh, the Chair recognizes District Seven Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Uh, ma'am, um, what I'd like you to know is that last Monday, I hosted an emergency town hall meeting to discuss this matter. Yes.
At World Changers.
At World Changers, yes.
But you also said you wasn't gonna shut the apartment down?
Well, here's the thing, and I want you to understand, I'm a legal person. I'm a, I'm a paralegal. And so, we don't talk about apples and oranges, we talk about specifics. Those are condominiums.
Right.
And you can't just shut it down. Now, you just can't, because if we, if you, if it was a subdivision with how, with trap houses lined up, you just can't shut down the trap houses bec, you just can't do it because people own them. So this is, this is what I want you to know. We had the town hall meeting at World Changers. We had several agencies that were there. The Chief Magistrate Judge, we had, um, the Solicitor General's Office with his chief investigator prosecutors, and we had personnel from the sheriff's office. What the personnel from the sheriff's office informed us is that they are executing warrants every day. They actually arrested someone that same day executing a warrant against squatters, people that shouldn't be there. Now, I would like to let you know that I want to thank, um, Madam Subidan and Chief Meadows for putting in place a plan of action where we have had, this Friday, I believe, between Thursday and Friday started the most aggressive, heavy crime reduction program on Old National that I have seen in a long time. I have seen, I have gotten calls from business owners to say, "We see cars being, like, five and six cars pulled over in one time, roadblocks, road checks, a, aggressive sweep." And what I believe, I can't speak for them, but as someone with a criminal justice degree and someone in the legal profession, it has been something that has significantly deterred crime. A slang term for that is when the block is hot, the folks just, they stay where they at, they don't come out. And so, this aggressive move, I believe, is addressing this issue. It's because we're trying to address this issue. And there are other things that are happening, um, there are things happening. It's just that people don't understand it because it's not happening, it's not happening in a fashion which just shuts it down completely. You've talked about the coast, code enforcement component. They have cited many owners, there are many violations. Unfortunately, the state law also does not cooperate with us in where you may have a unit that is uninhabitable from our perspective, but Georgia law does not address, address what is uninhabitable. As long as you got a roof, you got doors, you got windows, it's a structure. They, according to Georgia law, it's inhabitable. So there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but if you go on Old National, you will see what I'm talking about. I saw it today, just grabbing lunch, and I saw four sheriff deputy vehicles, and they came in some kind of formation, and I saw one of our officers that had pulled somebody over, and this is in the parking lot, um, over by the Goodwill. And I just haven't seen something that looked that aggressive, and it actually almost made me uncomfortable, and I don't even have a problem. But when you see a lot of police in an area, to me, it seemed like they're looking for something or they're finding something, I'm getting out the way, and criminals do not like to be around police. So I assure you, I can only give you my word that we are working really hard on that issue, and we're gonna continue to work real hard. You know, I, I give you my condolences on the tragedy of your son's death. I've lost someone very recently to gun violence, and it's an issue that goes on all over the city. I know it's concentrated in Camelot, but I assure you, we're working super-duper hard. And if you take the time to speak to Chief Meadows, who is here, um, he can assure you and maybe share things that I can't. But I appreciate you coming here and, and talking about this. We really do care. We care a whole lot, and, and I yield.
All right, uh, the Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, Mayor, if I may, um, I know that we all feel very deeply the pain of this mother, as well as all of the other people who have, um, lost their lives in Camelot. However, I think that it would be prudent for us to reconsider continuing this conversation in this vein, um, given that we do have ongoing police activity, we have open code enforcement cases, and, um, I would caution, Mayor, that we be very mindful that everything we say and everything we do we're putting on camera to become evidence in a court of law. Um, and so I would just ask, Mayor, that if we could move the, move on to the next, um, public comment, or if there are no more, if we could please move the agenda um, before we say something that will be played in court to our detriment. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. I agree. I did try to move us on. Um, it will be the pleasure of this council. Um, can we move on?
And we did suspend the rules.
Okay. The Chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Willis.
Ma'am, I just want to give you some words of encouragement. I am, um, so sorry that you lost your son to the act of violence. When I got elected in twenty seventeen, I had a high-crime community in my district, and it was called Hickory Park, known now as Freedom Park. And we had over a hundred crime incidents a year, and I have the data to prove it. Now, we're at maybe five violent incidents. And we did not shut them down, but it did, we did take a comprehensive approach, and it did take about three years to get us where we are now. Um, and we did work with Chief Meadows, several law enforcement partners, code enforcement, and it also took the property manager to work with us too, to, uh, install a sophisticated camera system into the property manager's office. We also went in and provided supportive services to the families and the children, and I still go into the apartment complexes to this day. Cylon Church International is a great partner, um, and they tutor kids three times a week and provide food insecurity. Comcast put a lift zone over there. They put three hundred thousand dollars in IT infrastructure, and they also donated thirty computers. I say all of that to say, arresting our way out of trouble is not the only answer. We're gonna have to take a comprehensive approach, that's part of it. But we have a lot of children, and we have a lot of seniors over there. And we are going to have to take a comprehensive approach, um, to solve the problem. And what complicates Camelot is that these are individually owned apartment units, and Georgia favors property owners' rights. And so, I cannot go into all of the efforts that are going into resolving the crime issues, but I can assure you that there are some efforts going on that cannot be divulged. Um, but I just want you to know that there are children, there are seniors over there, and we gotta think about, and it's, it's, as many people say we need to shut them down, there's also, I have a lot of emails of seniors saying they don't want to be shut down because that's their home, and they don't want to be displaced. And I can show you those emails. You can do a pup, you can do an open record request, and I can share those emails to you. So it's very complicated, but I can assure you that what's going on now does not have to continue to go on because in my district, my high, my high-crime community, where I was having a hundred violent crime issues a year, and we're only down to five now. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes District Five Councilman Cory Reeves.
Thank you so much, and I'm just gonna say thank you to our officers, our code enforcement professionals, and our fire officials, and to the staff at the city who's been working diligently, uh, with this administration on the resolve as comprehensively, we've been headed down the right path, as I say, to take time. Thank you, Chief, for your efforts, and it's all part of the crime reduction. And so, uh, as, just open records of correction, ask for the facts on what has been done. We cannot bring them back, we cannot say anything further than what we can say. But I'm just gonna say.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jet, we can't, I can't allow you to respond. Uh, you've spoken, and council has responded, we do have to move.
I may be out of order. I didn't ask you to bring him back. I asked you to do something about the property.
No, no, I wasn't speaking directly specifically to you, ma'am. I'm, I'm sorry about that, if you took it that manner. I do apologize. But I just, thank you to our staff who has been working diligently to eradicate and doing something about this situation.
All right, uh, thank you, everyone. This is the most public conversation we have ever had about Camelot. Not for a lack of trying, but thank you, uh, Ms. Jet, for coming and, uh, telling us about your son, and thank you, everyone, for all that you're doing. I understand that Ms. Jewel Johnson has returned, uh, to give us the final public comment of the evening. If you will approach the mic.
I'm so touched. And I'm sorry that, um, one of our citizens have got, experienced what they have experienced. And it touched me very dearly to my heart because I have two, I have three sons, and thank God that they are still with me today. But I wanted to speak on, please forgive me, because I'm still real touched, on all these zoning cases in our city. And I know for a fact that we have some issues to deal with as it relates to that because many of times, not only me, but many other residents have asked several times that we amend our planning and zoning. And I'm asking this council, mayor, and the city manager to please, let's take a look at amending that with the people. We cannot move farther without the people's input. This has been going on too long, and I know a lot of you don't agree with me, and that's okay. It's okay to disagree and understand the disagreement between civilized adults. And that's the reason I'm coming before you right now. You, you don't have to take Jewel Johnson or any of these citizens home with you when you go home. We only request that you do your fiduciary responsibility, and we are supposed to have a part of that, and we have been constantly asking for that. And you have constantly ignore, ignored everything that we have asked along those lines. That's one of the reasons I wanted to bring that up because we have serious issues as it relates to our planning and zoning. And you know that I know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your comments. Uh, we have now reached, uh, council comments, and we are back on schedule. So I'll start this time with District One Councilwoman Dr. Rao.
Thank you, um, thank you to all the citizens who came out. I want to give a couple of quick updates. On October fourth, at the Southwest Arts Center, I have a community conversation with Greystone Power to address, um, reliability issues. I want to encourage you to come out at six o'clock. You can register, uh, via Eventbrite, and, um, as long as you're serviced by Greystone Power, we want you to participate. In addition, on October fourteenth, in partnership with Councilwoman, uh, Pritchett, we will have a veterans brunch at the Tennis Center. Um, and, um, any of our veterans, we want to encourage you to reach out to either of us. There is a Google registration form that you can find on any of our social media platforms or the cities to register for that event. We are, we're planning a grand time for our veterans, so, uh, we encourage you to participate. Thank you. Okay, uh, I'll go, Mayor Pro Tem.
I apologize, I did not realize he left the room. Councilwoman Gomes.
All right, um, thank you.
We know that, as you all know, I love seniors in District Two, and on September 28th, we will be having, at 10:00, we will be having our Senior Health Day with the South Fulton Police and Fire Department. It's called Brunch and Badge, which I thought was kind of cute, but we will be talking about fun activities. We'll learn more about city resources. It's similar to Coffee with a Cop, but we just changed it up, just so you all won't be thinking you're going to have coffee. We'll feed you pancakes and waffles. But we are asking that you come out, and then after we finish, you'll exercise and have a good time. So we are asking you to come out on the 28th, which I believe is this coming Thursday? Also too, on October 13th, we'll be having, also, wait, let me, before I go to that one, also on that evening, we'll be having an event at the Southwest Arts Center. It's District Two Clean City Conversations. It's the town hall where we'll have code enforcement, public works, an array of people to discuss our little concerns and illegal dumping, and letting you know what the city is doing to correct that measure and the opportunities that we have for the upcoming budget year. So that meeting will be a virtual town hall that will also be recorded and livestreamed on the city's YouTube page. So if you cannot make it, we'll definitely make sure that you all have access to the recordings, and that is at 5:30 PM that evening, on September 28th. Also, on October 13th, again, we are rocking with some seniors. Councilwoman Willis will tell you a little bit more about the senior brunch that will be held at Welcome Mall Park. This is a partnership that I think she, we will have some great things happening. And lastly, we are working to try to get another bulk-free and recycling day at Merck Miles Transfer. We're just working out, and free paper shredding. So we are, right now, trying to work out some details with that, but that will happen towards the end of the month. So again, please stay tuned to what's happening in District Two. Thank you all for your emails, your encouragement, and support. We've got a lot going on in the city of South Fulton. If you need more information, please feel free to follow my social media handles, and then also go to my website at CarmelithaGomes.com. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, District Three Councilwoman Helen Willis.
District Two. Thank you for recognizing me. I want to extend condolences to the Pastor Earl Wade Callaway Senior Family. He was the senior pastor of St. Stephen's Missionary Baptist Church. It is in East Point, but he has been a pillar in the South Fulton region for over 31 years. He transitioned this previous, he transitioned on yesterday. And so, less than all the love to the Pastor Earl Callaway Senior Family. On a brighter note, I want to send a congratulations out to Reverend William Freeman, senior, former senior pastor of the first Red Oak Baptist Church on Washington Road. He retired last Sunday with 32 years of service to the, to First Red Oak Historic Baptist Church, and I was able to honor him with the City of South Fulton proclamation. I want to tell him thank you for his service, and he will still be around. He's a District Three resident, and I just, I spoke with him today, and I hope he enjoys retirement. He has children and grandchildren that he would continue to spend his time with in retirement. District Three is welcoming this Saturday, the Fifth Annual Yeet Dance Festival at Welcome Mall Park. Please come out, bring your family. It is, we are honoring some, some of the famous DJs, recognizing them for 50 years of hip-hop, so please come out. It's always a fun, family time. It's the Yeet Dance Festival here at Welcome Mall Park this Saturday, and it starts at noon. Again, Councilmember Gomes mentioned the senior sip and safety. We are having this sip and safety brunch, because I have encountered a lot of seniors who didn't know anything about registering their alarms, didn't know anything about the, the safety measures that we have in place to register their, their cameras. They don't know that we have safety components to add to their vehicles, if they have Hondas or what's the other? Kia. Kia's. And so, a lot of our seniors are not on email, a lot of our seniors are not on social media, and so, we are asking them to come out, so we can give them some safety tips, and we will have our public safety personnel, our fire department will be there to also educate them about fire safety and the fire checks, and the installation of the, the fire alarms that they do. We also want to graduate, congratulate Tyrone Spears. He hosted a golf tournament yesterday that Councilmember Gomes, Councilmember Rala and I attended, and we honored him, the Tyrone Spears and Jardine Foundation, and it was in a fundraiser to help support autism, and we were able to give him a proclamation. He does a lot of good work through the foundation, supporting the cause of autism. So, kudos to Tyrone Spears. It was a great turnout, and we had people from all over the region that attended. I want to remind everybody about the, on October 14th, the Red Oak Historic District Arts Festival. This has blossomed into a beautiful event. It will be on October 14th, Saturday, on Roosevelt Highway. They are still accepting applications for vendors. It will be from 12 to 6:00 PM. I want to thank the Red Oak Historic District Board. They have worked tirelessly over the years to help spur economic, spur economic development in the area, bring attention to a lot of the businesses in the area, and this year, we have over 30 vendors that will be participating. We will have vendors, music, theater, art, live music. It's always a great time, so come out October 14th, from 12 to 6:00 PM, and if you would like to be a vendor, please reach out to my office, so I can get you connected with Kaitlin. Kaitlin is the manager of the Red Oak Main Street Program, and she's doing an amazing job sparing economic development in the Red Oak District. If you're not receiving my newsletters, please reach out to me. You can subscribe to my newsletters by texting District Three at 428-2842828, or you can simply email me at Helen.Willis@cityofsouthfultonGA.gov, or you can call me at 404-803-4219, or you could simply inbox me, or reach out to me on Facebook, or reach out to my legislative specialist, Shannon Parham, and we'll be happy to get you registered to receive newsletters that go out bi-weekly electronically. Thank you so much, and thank you for engaging, and thank you for coming out, for all those who attended in person, and those who are attending virtually.
All right. District Four Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to express condolences. I see his mom has left for the loss of her son in Camelot. I know I've already offered my support in whatever way he needs it to Councilmember Reeves, and so I think everyone here is concerned about what is happening there at Camelot, and we're not taking it lightly. I want to thank everyone who came out for District Four Fall Festival this past Saturday. It was an awesome event. Thank you, staff, for the work that you did in making this happen. I think it's the biggest one that we have had so far. I think that event has started even before I was councilmember. But in the two years I've been here, this year has been even bigger than before, and I look forward to continuing to work with this and build community through this effort. And thank you for those that came out. Our clerk, councilmember, or thank you guys, or coming all the way out to the country to be with us at Welcome Summer Park. And also too, I'm going to call him out, our parks director, as well, for the work that you and your team did in making that event possible. I am, I also want to express condolences to the family of Sir Jose Bright, District Four resident, who I was made aware a few days ago, who passed away recently. I just want to express my condolences to him and, and the friends who might be even listening in this moment. I am, I'm a little bit frustrated, to be quite honest. I have gotten several emails, and I have been, and contacts. It's been around this issue of lands being disturbed for subdivisions in District Four and other development. And I just want to let the public who are listening know, and even those that are here, that, as they always say, zoning follows the land, and councilmembers do not get involved in development unless something goes through the planning and zoning process, and we have to do a zoning change. We don't know, the landowners, they have a right to work with their zoning and do the development as they want to do it once they have the zoning, and it's up to our staff and the monitoring process to see to it that they're doing what they need to do according to our laws. I, I too am frustrated, because I would, I would dare guess that, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, because this is very important, I would dare guess that District Four is probably the district in the city that has most of these pre-approved development and subdivisions on the Fulton County, and that is just because we've had, we have so much vacant lands. I can tell you right now, there's probably four developments that are going on, that even I, as a councilmember, did not know that these were happening, until I go and trees are being cleared, or someone called me and said, hey, why are they cutting down the trees on Hall Road? And I'm like, well, I don't know, right? Should I know? I would love to know, because I would, I've already asked staff if we could look at a process, in which although we're not involved with the zoning, if we, as councilmembers, could at least, once an application comes through, to be given a heads-up that something is happening. Because I would love to have a conversation with these developers, to say, have you spoken to the community? It would be nice if you want to partner with our community, to go back, even though you have the zoning, to go back and have some conversation with the zoning, because some of these zonings are 20 years old, and what they plan to build 20 years old surely shouldn't be the same thing that they're going to be building today. So at least, if you have a conversation with the community and have some sense of what the current needs are, you're truly building a partnership. But again, if I don't know, I don't know. I have to investigate when the trees are being cleared, and by that time, honestly, it's probably too late. So it's not about stopping development, it's about making sure that our communities get quality development, regardless of when the zoning was done, right? And I hope, as a city, we find a way to address this, because yes, that plaque for Hampton Oaks showed up on the agenda. I looked at it and saw it, like everybody else, when the agenda was published. I had no conversation with staff about this, and I looked at it, I know exactly where it was, right? And I would love to find out, well, what type of, what type of buildings are they putting there, right? What's going to be the plan for public safety around these, these denser developments, right? All these are questions that, to me, we owe the public as a city. So I'm challenging us to look at that process and to see if we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes District Five Councilwoman Cory Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor. As heart, pride, and determination, three words that mean a lot to me, shape me, actually, is your heart got to be in whatever you're doing. You have to have pride in it, and you have to be determined to make a difference. As, just when you think the process isn't working, they say, believe in the process, trust the process. That's all we can do. And we have staff who are innovative, creative, determined to make a difference, and want to make a difference, and I champion that. And we have great leadership, and it's something to say that when you have accomplished a lot, but still have so far to go, as the new city thing, that's, the new car smell's worn off, so we six years old, we'll be seven next year, and seven being the number of completion. And I tell you, I've been quite lenient about opinions, as the facts are, this is a great city, y'all, and it's our city, and we determined the outcome. That's why we became a city. And so, with seven districts true, but five sevens of the city, and so, I think of us as a whole, and the future is bright, and I'm just saying that sometimes you have to get out your own way, but everything is a process. Before a house became a house, those first trees, so it's a process to get there, and believe in the process, as good Lord works in mysterious ways, but things that seem inadequate or from the eye point of view, just know the staff that we have and the resources allocated to it is diligently working toward achieving the goal, as y'all see the outline in the budget we just approved tonight. And I believe that roadmap to success is going, will materialize, and it's going to get us there, as we have a captain, co-captain, and get this, and you have a team. Together, everyone achieves more, and I firmly believe in that, and I'm going to stand behind it, as I don't have to scream a lot of things, but just know that impact is being made, and I'm proud of that, and from the team we have up here, but to the most important component of this city is the constituents, and we're here for you always. And shout out to my councilmember, J.C., for spearheading the world's largest Autism Sensory Fest, and because it's the fifth anniversary of Yeet Fest, I just might be out there Saturday, yeeting it up, okay? And so, as, just pray for this city, don't pray on this city. P-R-A-Y for the city, don't P-R-E-Y. As, it's open season, y'all, we all know this, but I'm going to stand by the facts and the impact that has been made, and I appreciate everyone who has made it possible, as history has been made and will continue to be made, because we are a city of firsts. Remember that. And thank you to all the staff, and I just appreciate you, and I love you, and you can't do nothing about it.
Thank you, Councilman Reeves. Mayor Protem Williams Brown.
I normally don't have much to say during comments, because I've always, I was taught and have always believed... I've always, I was taught and have always believed that your actions should speak louder than your words. And that the people who are most effective at their jobs are those who are doing their jobs and not talking about doing their jobs. So I say very little. However, I am a little distressed this evening. Because we sit here, meeting after meeting. And we say a lot, we say a lot, the public says a lot, lots of talking goes on. And in the midst of that talking, there seems to be lots of animosity. Lots of dislike, lots of distrust. Lots of accusations thrown about. And those things are put out in the atmosphere, but then never followed up on in a way that is meaningful. Answers to questions and solutions to problems cannot be promulgated in the midst of a meeting where we were called together to move the business of the city forward. And it is clear to me that there need to be some meaningful conversations that cannot happen in this forum. Because that is not why we are assembled here. And so I would like to see, as I run out of seconds, I would like to see us take some time and take some steps back to understand what is everybody mad about? Why is everybody rolling their eyes, snapping their necks, grabbing, grabbing papers? And just in general, behaving as though this is not a professional setting where professionals are assembled to conduct business? And I hope that we can get to the point where instead of launching attacks and hurling accusations, that we can sit down and try to understand what is everybody so mad about? Particularly given that we have been charged, if you are truly the Christian you profess to be, to live peaceably among all men. Your time and your energy on this earth are limited. Don't waste them on things that are beyond your control. I yield.
Thank you. District Seven, Councilwoman Bridget.
Thank you again. I just would like to remind the residents that lately, if you start seeing debris in the roads, trees, limbs, things like that, I've received lots of your emails and phone calls and text messages, but please utilize See, Click, Fix. It helps us to document what's out there in the road. It allows us to also make sure that the right personnel attends to those things. So See, Click, Fix, please download the app, it's very useful for those things, potholes, trash, illegal dumping, all those type of things that many of you, I welcome your emails so that I can follow up, but I would love for your emails to include your See, Click, Fix ticket number so that I can follow up on that. And with that said, I will yield. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, if you would bring up that PowerPoint, thanks so much.
While our clerk is bringing that up, I will just reiterate all of the comments that have been spoken previously about Camelot and our concern for the families there and the families throughout our city. I think we will be rolling out some initiatives and some policies that will hopefully make our, our renters and our homeowners safer and hold landlords accountable. But this week, our sanitation bills are due. They are due on the 30th. If you can pay online, or you can visit these local offices at Greenbrier Mall or Stonewall Tel. If you have questions, you can always call our 311 number, 470-552-4311. Next slide. Playing now, you heard me talk about this earlier at the Southwest Art Center, is that serious He-Man Ball? The True Colors Theater Company is celebrating their 20th anniversary, and for 14 of those 20 years, they have been housed at our own Southwest Art Center. We are proud to support the arts here. You can go to the next slide. It is incredible play. Happens to be, the entire cast happens to be from the city of South Fulton. These are all guys that I went to high school with. So come out and see some incredible homegrown actors. Go to the next slide. Last week, myself and several council members attended the 52nd Annual Legislative Session of the Congressional Black Caucus. We met a lot of luminaries. You see me here with Barbara Lee, a congresswoman who I've quoted before, and next slide, Jomani Williams, who is actually the City of New York's Public Advocate. He worked very closely, his office worked very closely with ours in the setting up of our Public Advocates Office. We thank him for that. Go to the next slide. But of all the important people that I've met in Washington, D.C., the most important people for me, or the most impressive people for me, were the political science students of Dr. Ravi Perry's Political Science Class at Howard University. Go to the next slide, you can see me talking. The next generation of leaders are here. And we're gonna be talking more about educating our young people in political science and bringing more young people into City Hall with our Paid Intern Program, if you'll go back for me. Yeah, go to the next slide, I'm sorry, thank you. This October, we are bringing back Courageous Conversations. If you did, if you weren't able to make it into the Last Town Hall, it is a, an event not to be missed. It will be Friday, 10/20, at the Southwest Art Center. You can find out more information. I'm gonna tell you how, if you go to the next slide. You don't have to wait until October 20th to have a courageous conversation with me. You can come and talk about anything that you want. You can get 20 minutes with the mayor every Monday for Mayor Mondays. You can call and make an appointment, or you can just walk in. We take walk-ins all day on Mondays, so please come out. And you can find all of this information and more by texting the word FULTON, F-U-L-T-O-N, to 33777. That is 33777. If you text the word FULTON, it'll sign you up for my newsletter and text alerts. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're gonna continue with the meeting. South Fulton, forever. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, that brings us to item 25 on the agenda under Calendar and Administration. This is the second read and request for approval of an ordinance to amend Title I, Administration, Chapter III, Mayor and Council of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances for the purpose of amending Section 1-3001, time, place, for meetings and zoning hearings and open meetings. This is placed on the agenda by the City Manager.
All right, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This will allow us to have two regular meetings a month. The first meeting will have a workshop and a work, work session, and staff will bring presentations. The second will be council and invited guest presentations. Of course, we will spread them out. And each of those meetings will allow for us to get regular items approved, and we will have a consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Nature is made up of circles, and after many tesellations of council meetings, we are returning to our original format, second and fourth Tuesdays with a work session followed by a council meeting. There will be a slight adjustment. Please correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to hear the zoning cases on the first Tuesday, and we're going to do the proclamations on the fourth Tuesday to try and even things out and keep, keep the meeting under five hours. And with that, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve an ordinance to amend Title I, Chapter III, Mayor and Council of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances for the purpose of amending Section 1-3001, time, place, for meetings and zoning hearings, open meetings.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I will call for the vote by a show of hands.
Record that as unanimous, approved.
All right, please sound the next item.
That brings us to item 26. Request for approval to confirm a special event for Camp Creek Church of Christ 5K Walk/Run, scheduled for September 30th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And it starts and ends at the church driveway located at 2400 Merck Road, South Fulton, Georgia, 30311. This is located in District Two, C-D-R-A.
I move.
Wait, wait, hold on, I'm gonna, did C-D-R-A, you recalled, all right. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gums, District Two.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 26, to approve for a special event for Camp Creek Church of Christ 5K Walk and Run for September 30th. I would also like to move to approve item number 27, which is the second read for a request for approval of an ordinance to amend Title VIII, Traffic and Vehicles of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances. And also, I would like to approve item number 29, which is the second read and request for approval of ordinance to amend Title 13, Fire Protection and Prevention for Chapter III, Fire Prevention Code and Safety Standards of the Code of Ordinances for the City of South Fulton.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on items 26, 28, or 29? 27 or 29? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will call for a vote by a show of hands.
Record that as unanimous, approved.
All right, please sound the next unsounded item. Wait, we're, we're gonna sound the item first.
That actually brings us item 31.
No, I think we were on item 28.
I'm sorry.
27, 27 or 29?
Item 28 is a first read. It's an ordinance to amend Section 6-2002, Definition, Chapter 2, Solid Waste Ordinance, Title VI, Health Administration by reinstituting the 2005 Fulton Solid Waste Management Plan and for other lawful purposes, sponsored by Councilmembers Rile and Public Works. First read.
All right, the Chair recognizes District One Councilwoman Rile.
Just to provide clarity, there was some omission, so let's just make sure that our Public Works or Solid Waste Ordinance and Plan is in place, so.
All right. This is just a comment, I'm sure that we'll have discussion, but Merck Miles is included in this solid waste plan. I just want to make sure that, I will say, previously, we, we approved a comprehensive plan and then found ourselves locked into that plan before we really understood that. So let's just take these two weeks and make sure that we, you know, understand all the ramifications of approving all the details of this plan.
Yeah, we've been working on that extensively to make sure we've covered our bases. That's why it's in conjunction with Public Works.
All right. Seeing and hearing no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, please sound the, the next item. I think we're at 30.
Yeah, item 30, first read, an ordinance to amend Title VI, Health and Sanitation, Chapter I, Smoke-Free Air of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances, so as to provide an exemption from the smoking regulations identified in Section 6-1005 through 6-1008, for one cigar bar located at 3461 Roosevelt Highway, Suite 15, and for other lawful purposes, sponsored by Councilmember Willis. First read.
So just to provide, provide a little clarity, this is not amending the smoke-free ordinance. This is for, to provide an exemption to the single business due to a lot of the inaccuracies and, and errors that occurred when this business opened. I mean, I don't want to go into all of it, but I will tell you that this business should have never been granted a business license because there was a moratorium. And there was oversight by staff that granted the business license. There are several oversights in this business. This business had invested over $500,000 of investment into this business. And so after consulting with our city attorney, we did not want to amend the smoke-free ordinance that passed unanimously, but we also don't want to be punitive to a business that had a lot of oversight and was not informed about a lot of things that should not have occurred. And so it was expressed that it was just best to exempt this business to allow them to continue to operate as is without amending the ordinance. This is the first read. We will be voting next City Council meeting. Thank you. But this is not an amendment to the ordinance. The ordinance remains. This is an exemption to, for this business. Thank you.
All right, seeing and hearing no further comment, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to item 31. Under Purchasing and Future Expenditures, Parks and Recreation, Request for Approval of a Resolution Approving the Interim City Manager's Recommendations for the Renovation of Welcome Mall Park Pool and the Consideration of Outdoor Pools in the City and for Other Purposes. 1.5 million for Welcome Mall, including contingency, and 3.5 million for two new outdoor pools, including contingency, at Burdette and Cedar Grove Park. This is sponsored by Councilmembers Willis, Williams, Brown, Gums, and Sebastian.
I move that we I'm sorry.
We will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this measure. Request for Approval, Resolution Approving the Interim City Manager's Recommendations for the Renovation of Welcome Mall Park Pool and for the Consideration of Outdoor Pools in the City for Other Purposes, specifically Burdette and Cedar Grove Park. I also move that we approve and request the approval to award the contract for ITB Tremacrow Tennis Court Rebuild. I also move that we approve the road and bridges. Request approval to award the contract of Cochrane Road over Deep Creek for 3.895677.40 million dollars. Also move that we request approval to award the contract T-Splas Road Reservicing Project for 21.726739.66 million dollars. I also move that we approve and request approval for a novation agreement between Williams, Russell, and Johnson Incorporated, Atlas Technical Consultants LLC Limited Liability Company, the City of South Fulton, Georgia Municipal Corporation. And lastly, I also move that we approve, request for approval to allow Atlas Technical Consultants LLC to partner Consultants LLC to partner and complete the design of the T-260 National Highway Sidewalk Phase 2 as the engineering record in the amount of $150,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve items 31 through 37. The queue is open. I hear there is discussion. I will begin with District 5 Councilman Reeves.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I want to go back to 31, and so when it says "and for consideration of outdoor pools in the city," is that going to be a design deal?
I would...
And do we have a timeline for that? Is a potential start date?
The specs are being reviewed by the Senior Procurement Analyst, David Bryant, and Parks Director. So our intention is, as soon as we get a green light to go out to bid, we are estimating, based on recent pools that have been completed, and it will be pool, bathhouses, splash pad, and site prep.
Can you repeat that just for...
Sure. Pools, bathhouses, splash pad, and site preparation.
All right, thank you so much. And on the signature tennis courts for Tremacrow, and as part of the going on is the resurfacing of the Burdette Tennis Center, consideration, has that been looked at?
Can't say where we are with that. I have to circle back with the Parks Director to see where that is in the queue.
Thank you so much. And the resurfacing project, T-Splas Road Resurfacing Project, now is this the resurfacing, and do we have a list of the streets that's going to be resurfaced?
Yes, it's attached to your agenda.
It's attached to the agenda, correct. So is the resurfacing of Stacks Road in this? Because I know that we approved a grant of 2 million specifically for that, and is that going to be executed by the same contractor?
I'd have to circle back with you and double check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes District 4 Councilman Sebastian.
Just have a quick question on item 33. Madam City Manager, just what's the source of funding for that 3.9 million dollars?
Thirty-three, I believe we identified that as a T-Splas project.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I would like to ask a question first about item 37, the Old National Sidewalk Phase. I feel that this has been on the agenda before to complete the design. We've been paying for this design for... As long as I've been on this council. What is happening now, new here, that has not happened before?
So these two, 36 and 37, are cleanup items for us to be able to pay the vendor. I believe what occurred is part, there was a partnership, there was a name change, somebody died in the process, the business, the work of the business was done by one group. Now we're unable to pay them because they don't have a contract with us. So both 36 and 37 have been worked on by the attorneys and by staff to get us to a place where we can complete this and pay the bill. Am I missing anything, Vincent?
I'm gonna quote the irreplaceable Dr. Mark Baker as I talk about number 31, these pools. Madam Senior Manager, I'm uncomfortable. We just heard this presentation two weeks ago and we're spending millions of dollars. I'm not clear where these outdoor pools are going. I just, I mean, you're, you have been more than capable in your execution of everything up to this point, but I am just also looking at an agenda after agenda after agenda with cleanup items around procurement, and I just don't think it's ready. And I believe that we are going to see this on an agenda again because it's not ready. That's how I feel and I just, I want to put those comments on the record. I think that we... Some things seem to move at a glacial pace in our city and some things seem to move faster than the speed of sound, and it concerns me.
Well, you will see these again. This is your approval to move forward, this is not procurement. When we come back with the procurement, we will have a side plan, you'll get more comfort possibly around it. But feeling approval really isn't rocket science, so I think it's needed. I think we know it's needed, the community has spoken, the professional staff know it's needed. In a pool in a city of 108,000 people, one pool is, one public pool is just not realistic.
I hear you.
Mayor, I have a discussion.
The Chair recognizes District 3 Councilwoman Willis.
And so I would like to go on the record to say that our city manager has done her due diligence. Before, we had a very detailed and thorough presentation at the last council meeting. She specifically pulled in a room for me, the district representative, who has had a Welcome Mall pool closed for about three years now, two because, two years because of the pandemic. But now, you know, there is, we have to totally rebuild that pool and our colleagues agreed in majority that it makes no sense to continue to do patchwork on that pool. That is over 20 years old, that we inherited from the county in this repair. And so she brought all of the subject matter experts in the room to explain to me all of the options. We also had a town hall meeting with several community members that was well-attended and it was also videotaped and shared in the newsletter. So I am, and we have four co-sponsors on here, we are very comfortable with where we are. And I appreciate Mrs. Subidan for picking up the ball and running and getting the subject matter experts in it because this pool was not properly assessed and we were not given the proper information. We were told it was just a roof problem and then we kept having to get change orders to fix the roof. We weren't told that the pumping system and the air conditioning system and the pool was leaking. We weren't told any of that. It took Ms. Subidan to come here, bring the subject matter experts into the room, and explain where we were, where we need to go, and what our options. And I totally trust what she is recommending and I totally agree that in a city with over 108,000 residents, we should have, 108,000 residents, we should not have only one pool. So I want to go on record to say that, and I move the previous question.
Second.
All right, we'll take a vote by a show of hands for the previous question.
Record that as unanimous.
All right, and we'll take a vote by a, I'm sorry, we'll do a roll call vote for this, for these items 31 through 37.
So that brings us back to the main motion, a motion by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Rile to approve items 31, 32, 33, 35, 36, and 37. Roll call vote, Councilmember Rile?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Williams Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
That brings us to item 38. This is a request approval to award a contract for ITB 23-17 for standby storm line cleaning. The contract is awarded to SCA LLC, and the award amount is $80,500.
I move to...
The Chair will entertain a motion.
Okay. I request approval for items number 38, request approval to award the contract for ITB number 23-17 standby storm line cleaning. Also too, I'd like to request approval for item 39, which is a request for approval to modify and renew the existing professional services agreement for Brightview Landscaping in an amount of 1 million, is that 1 million? 1 million plus?
18,000.
Yes.
18,000.
18,000, yeah, that. $641.36.
Thirty-six cents.
Yes. Let's not forget the 36 cents. And then also too, I want to request approval for item number 40, which is a request approval to enter into an agreement with Periyani Construction to provide interior facility renovation for Fire Station Number 6, Cedar Grove. The agreement is a piggyback off the cooperative agreement with the state of Georgia. Also too, I would like to request approval for item number 41 as well, request approval for the contract for ITB number 23-76 Real-Time Crime Center Digital Platform Project IBM Dash in an amount of 753,132.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Reeves.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me as on item 38. And I just want to know, Madam Subidan, from the standpoint of the Director of Public Works, is there's a specific location on Old Bill Cook, dealing with Mr. Minnefield that's been an issue for the past two and a half, three years, and we've talked about this in discussion. Please tell me that this is, can be done under this contract for this amount.
I would need to get the specifics and I'm not prepared to bring up the Public Works Director right now, so he's aware of it, I can circle back with you. And on Stacks Road, we expect it to be on the November, November.
Thank you so much.
It's not included with the previous bid.
Solid. Thank you so much. Thirty-nine is, I have an issue with the amount because of the location, and I think it should be increased because under the discussion out there under the contract, the additionally bi-weekly services was also to include Highway 279 and Flatshoe Road. And so, and that is not on here, and I would just like that to get, because it literally upon, on the discussion when we initially started with the Brightview contract, then in Public Works, is all those, the base quarters was discussed, and I'm not seeing that on here, and I'd need just Highway and 279 and Flatshoe Road as for those additional bi-week street services for those sides, for those streets, for those two as specifically spelled out, so this amount should be increased.
Can we bring that back? Because I'm not sure that we have quotes for that at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm told it's included.
He talking.
It says it's included.
Because I like, you know, the words to be on the, because he is that in black and white, is I just kind of see that, as because the constituency would like to see that. But if we can just have that reissued, if it's included, just with it spelled out on here, that'd be awesome, because the constituency is, we had a call about this last night on my Monday call, so that'd be great. That's it. Out of you.
So just a point of information, it's included, but you're asking for the wording and the title to be amended to include?
Because if it's not written, it's not said, so I just kind of, if we can just write it out for clarification, to bring, you know, so I can see.
Yeah, just helping you with your substitute motion to amend the title to include these words, is that?
Yes, sir.
That's what you're doing?
For the record.
For the record. All right. Is there a second for that amendment? Do we need a second? Okay. All right. We have a second from Councilman Sebastian for that substitute motion. All right. Councilwoman Pritchett.
So Highway 279, Old National, Flatshoe Road, these are things that are already included. This is talking about additional, additional, in addition to what's already included. I understand what you mean by the constituency, but my constituency, when I have explained to them what Brightview is doing in addition to the sweeps, the street sweeper and other services, I've already explained that it's included. So to add these two streets to an additional weekly landscape, I would think would be legally incorrect because we're not part of an addition, we're not part of the add-on. And although, Madam City Manager, I do understand that the Public Works Director was not prepared to speak, but for a point of clarity, just so that the Councilman can be reassured or clear that it's already included.
It's already included in the current contract.
I'm very clear, ma'am. I'm talking about the addition of...
You had a question?
But however...
You had a question?
Thank you.
Because I'm about to call a question.
All right, I'm going to, a question of legal appropriateness was made and I would just like to hear from our city attorney about amending this item.
If I tracked everything correctly, the dollar amount to do the services includes the streets, but for minute purposes or for public record, I think Councilman Reeves said he wanted to make sure the bi-weekly service is included, Highway 279 and Flatshoe. So we're not making a change to the terms, conditions, scope of work, we're just reflecting for the minutes that the bi-weekly service, to make it clear, does include Flatshoe and Highway 279.
Are people able to get into the queue? I'm just, I'm just whoever I hear in my ear, I think I heard Councilwoman Gomes.
This question is for, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. This question is for the city manager. I'm comfortable with the amount that we are spending, but one of the things that I have noticed is that they're not as thorough as we would like them to be. What is the process for reevaluating, also making sure that we're holding them accountable? Because that's my main concern, is that, you know, if they're picking up, because I see things that happen in other cities as well, and I know the resident had came up and spoke about the accountability of it, so can we address that or how will we oversee that?
Sure. So one of the things that we are doing, which I think will put Public Works in a position to more effectively manage these contracts, is in the budget that you just approved, thank you, we have stood up a General Services Department. The General Services Department will be overseeing city facilities, city fleet. Public Works will be able to concentrate on those things that are in the right-of-way. Maintaining the right-of-way through this contract is one of their primary responsibilities, so my expectation is that they'll be able to ramp up their oversight efforts. Okay, thank you.
The Chair recognizes District 4 Councilman... The Chair recognizes District Four Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, I have a question about the renovations of the... At the Cedar Grove Tiny Fire Station, as we call it, making it larger. We did install a solar system to carry that building. Do... Are we going to have enough capacity with that current system to carry the rest of the building as it's expanded? That's just a question I had.
Sure. I imagine that they're going to be expanding by, I believe, three to four thousand square foot. And so, they would have to evaluate what's there, and if necessary, expand in order to power the additional space. My understanding is we're going to be adding additional space, community rooms, and then also an overall... An overall renovation to improve quality of life for the firefighters that live at that station by upgrading.
Okay. So, we will do an assessment to figure out if the current solar system can carry the rest of it?
Right. The full scope...
Then you'll come back.
The full scope is in your packet.
Yeah. It's very detailed already.
It is very.
Yeah. I don't remember seeing anything on the solar system to be exact. That's why I was asking.
And it will be all solar. It will continue to be all solar.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We have a substitute motion on the floor to amend the wording that appears in the minutes for this agenda item. I will take a vote for that substitute motion by a show of hands.
Record that as unanimous.
All right. Returning to the original motion to approve all of these items, thirty-eight through forty-one. Take a vote by a show of hands.
Record that as unanimous.
All right. And that brings us to the last item on our agenda.
Which is the second executive session.
All right. Before I entertain a motion, I do just want to take a point of privilege to remind all of the homeowners to check your mortgage, check with your bank to make sure that you are not double paying for our sanitation service. And I will entertain a motion to go into an executive session.
I move that we recess an executive session for real estate litigation and...
Personnel and cyber security.
Personnel and cyber security. I know it was all of that, but...
All the things.
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We'll take any discussion. All right. We'll take a vote by a show of hands.
Record that as unanimous. We are recessed at seven twenty-nine PM for executive session.
Good night, Shannon.
And we are back from executive session. I will entertain a motion to reconvene.
Motion.
Second.
It is been properly moved and seconded that we reconvene. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, are we ready for the question?
Yes.
Can we do this by a show of hands?
Record that as unanimous five zero. We are reconvened at eight oh eight P M.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Were there any actions coming out of executive session that require a public vote?
Yes, ma'am. I believe there is one.
Thank you. Um, I move to authorize the city attorney to use his authority to engage and compensate outside legal counsel pursuant to section one dash thirty oh nine.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve, um, the city attorney to engage and compensate outside legal counsel. Are we, is there any discussion? Hearing none, are we ready for the question? Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote for this one?
Roll call vote. Councilmember Orell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Mayor pro temp Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any other business before the council this evening?
Uh, there is no other business that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn.
Second.
It is been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, are we ready for the question?
Yes.
Can we do this by a show of hands?
I record that as unanimous. We are adjourned at eight oh nine P M. Have a good evening.